That one sitting out there that's always raises grief.
Ah, how you say what? What part of what?
Let's get this show on the road.
Yes, sir. Yes. Now, now.
The time is now six thirty-eight P. M. Call this meeting to order. Present we have Councilmember Yarborough, Councilmember Rodriguez, Mayor Pro Tem Mize, Councilmember Cornilson, and Councilmember Hodges. A quorum is present. Tonight's invocation will be Pastor Clayton Lowell from Stonewater and Godly. And if you can rise for that, and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance after that, please.
Thank you, Council. Hey, I just wanted to say my family and I moved to Godly last month. And it's just been just such a pleasant experience for us. We've absolutely loved it here. And I just want to thank you for, I'm sure, hundreds, if not thousands, of hours that y'all have spent in meetings that no one will ever see. It's really appreciated, especially by young families like ours. So, thank you. Let's pray. Lord, we just come to you just grateful, grateful for this town, grateful to live in this country. God, we we just need you. We need your wisdom. You say in Scripture that man plants his way, but the Lord determines his steps. So, God, just pray that we would be in tune with where you want us to go, that every decision, big or small, you would just give us supernatural wisdom beyond our understanding. Thank you for this, Council. Thank you for this room. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, tonight we have no public input. Nobody signed up. There was nothing on the schedule for mayor and council reports, presentations, or proclamations. So, we'll move on to item six, consent agenda. And the consent agenda tonight, we have discuss and possible action on approval of the Godly City Council minutes from the regular meeting held on January seventh, twenty twenty-five, and the department reports from the city administrator, the fire department, police department, and Public Works. Before we get there, Brittany gave a corrected copy of the minutes, so if you'd like to tell what the changes were.
I provided you with a corrected copy of the minutes. I had spelled the pastor's name incorrectly. It was Marcus instead of Maurice. I had also had to correct the times for the executive session, for the first executive session, sorry. We went in at seven oh three and came out at seven fifteen, so I needed to correct that. I had transposed those numbers. And then I also had to correct the motion on the new business. It was unanimous, and I had it at three to one. So, those were the only corrections.
I have a question about the corrections.
Yeah.
Pastor, what's your name?
Clayton Lowell.
And what church do you go to?
Stonewater, New Orleans.
That's what I thought it said. I'm looking at your...
The minutes are from last meeting.
That's the minutes from last week.
Ah, okay. I bet that's the one. I'm not too proud of that. Don't say nothing.
Okay.
Any other questions on the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Hodges and a second by Councilmember Yarborough to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion?
Yes. Brian wanted to let y'all know. Do you want to go ahead? He wanted to add something to his report that we didn't have enough time to get in there because of that fact.
Yeah, we just have our audit from the Texas Commission on Fire Protection.
Can I get you to come up to the microphone, sir?
The auditor from the Texas Commission on Fire Protection came and did our, well, it's not annual, every two years they come and audit to make sure that we're meeting the standards that they require us to meet. And we had no knocks on that. They gave a satisfactory rating. Just wanted the council to know that. I'm proud of the guys for working hard to keep keep up with the standards, so.
Thanks for your leadership, Chief.
Cool.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Do I have to say since I wasn't here?
No, because you still have the reports that she put in.
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to new business. Discuss and take possible action on approving the proposed municipal advisory agreement with Hilltop Securities for professional services on the issuance of municipal securities and future matters. I believe that's on you, Ms. Winkle? Yes?
This this is just to set up a municipal advisory agreement with Hilltop Security for professional services for in the future if we need any issuance of municipal securities. And I think we've talked about that a little bit with some projects that may be coming up. And so, Hilltop Securities has come and spoke with you before, and we are using Techstar and Techspool as our financial services as well to further extend, just not having one thing in one place, our money's in one place. But they are who who's the go-to for our municipal advisor in regards to issuing debt in the future.
These guys are?
Yes.
They got busted quite a bit, didn't they? All the way up to August fourteenth.
The what now?
Oh, they've got a deal in here that says, hey, we we are, I guess it's required, is that correct, for them to disclose what the evils they have done, so to speak?
Oh, I guess.
Page twenty and twenty-one, or it starts on twenty, primarily twenty-one.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. Something they have to disclose. Same thing as we have to disclose on our audits and stuff.
Has Toz reviewed the agreement? Is it pretty much standard?
Yeah, I don't have any major concerns.
Do you have minor concerns?
No, just it automatically renews since he will have to be on top of whether or not they want to continue to use their services after five years and cancel, so.
Didn't we want to stop doing those automatic renewals for budgetary purposes?
Yeah.
That was Dean's guidance, was not to accept any of the renewals.
So, we would just put it on the calendar?
Yeah. You have thirty, you have a thirty-day window to cancel.
Okay.
And you can still cancel at any time with thirty days' notice.
With thirty-day notice.
But can we take that part out of auto renewal, completely out?
You could, if you wanted to. You could strike it, yeah. You could just say something like it would renew upon written agreement of the parties to extend.
Yeah.
If you wanted to.
I would, I mean, that was Dean's guidance, was never to accept auto renewals to us.
Yeah, I agree.
I can...
Can you change that?
Yeah, I can submit.
Okay.
How long before we're going to need these guys? Pretty quick, right?
Pretty near future.
How long do you suppose it'll take to go from your, from that legal to their legal and back, et cetera, et cetera, with this change?
I mean, I I don't know. I've never worked with them, but I can't imagine either, the problem with these big companies is either we'll send the change and they'll automatically agree to it, or they'll just say no.
Okay, so it'll be pretty quick when we do it.
So, yeah, either way, they'll either make the change, or they'll say, no, we don't want to make that change.
And I just need to let them know, it's, you know, it's at our city attorney's recommendation because of, in the past, so many things were automatically renewed without being reviewed. And so, that's our stance on things now. So, shouldn't be any problem. I mean, they work with a lot of cities, school districts, a lot of entities, so I'm sure everybody has something that they don't want to keep the same.
I'll make a motion to accept item A with the correction of no auto renewal.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Rodriguez and a second by Councilmember Yarborough to accept item A with the correction of no auto renewal. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Item B, discuss and take possible action on approving and authorizing the city secretary to execute an election agreement for Johnson County to conduct the general election and special election to be held on May third, twenty twenty-five.
What's the special election, or is that just wording?
The Rotex?
Yes, it's the Rotex.
A renewal of it?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve item B as written.
I'll second him.
Have a motion by Councilmember Yarborough and a second by Councilmember Rodriguez to accept item B as written. Further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 I too.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Item C, discuss and take possible action on approving ordinance number... I don't have an ordinance number written on my agenda. Ordinance number zero-one dash two zero two-five dash one-three-one, amending chapter thirty-one, city council of Title III administration of the Godly Municipal Code to add a new section, thirty-one point oh three, number, selection, and term to designate a place system for the election of city council members in staggered terms, providing that the ordinance shall be cumulative of all ordinances, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. Brittany?
On this one. So, this is just the ordinance accomplishing what was discussed last meeting in executive session, setting a place system in staggering terms to make, to ensure that there are never more than three people on council up for election at a time, so there's not excessive council turnover. So, this just establishes five places and says they're all elected by majority vote at large, and states that the odd-numbered places will be elected in odd-numbered years, even-numbered places and mayor will be elected in even-numbered years.
Did, I'm sorry, did we look at or consider any of the other possibilities that council brought up last meeting?
Um, so, well, I I didn't, I don't know about all of the considerations. I know Annabelle had mentioned there was a possibility of extending a term. I don't, that's not possible. We can't, we can't extend a term without having an election. And either way, you're capped at two years, so we can't do that. Now, as far as if council wants to stick with a plurality system, nothing would really change. You would just have to, after the election, determine who takes a one-year term. My only consideration with that is that it will fix your problem temporarily, it will fix it for this election cycle, but if it were to ever get off again, you would have to do that again. So, this this will permanently fix it, so we never get off. But if you wanted to keep with a plurality system, there could be a way, either just by drawing names or whoever at, after the election, for who gets the short straw of having to do the one-year term to get it back on track.
Hey, we're guaranteed last meeting that as long as we have Toz, we'll never, no matter what we do, we'll never be in a situation again.
I would hope not. I mean, I would say it's very, very unlikely, but this this codifies it.
I just soon keep it as a, thank you. I just soon keep it as a plurality, the way it's, the way it's been done before. I don't want to change it. And we make the note that someone gets a one-year term, the next turnaround, we're done with it, and just keep it the way it's been. I don't want to go each person in a position. I want to do it to where everybody runs. If you have four seats and five people run, then only two people are going to run. So, I just, I think everybody should run and go with the majority votes.
One of my questions was, isn't this typically a standard procedure when you go home rule, charter, not for?
It can be, but I I represent three other general law cities. They all also have a place system. So, if if you ever went home rule, this would just be recodified in the charter. It would be exactly the same if it were to be adopted and council wanted to put that in the charter.
But isn't it standard because usually when you go, it's over, what, home rule, it's over five thousand? So, you have more people to run for actual slots, where here we don't have that population to fill those as easily. So, if, my question is, if four of us are up, you have places, people run, but there's nobody that fills this spot over here. The council that's currently sitting then gets to appoint that position instead of it going back for an election to the people. So, to me, that's taking that away from the people. And I'm with Roger, I don't agree with him.
Okay. Yeah, that's just, just to point, just to kind of hopefully quell some of your concerns. Council also can call a special election for that seat, if you'd like for it to go to an election. You don't have to appoint.
If they choose to.
Yes, yes. You can also, you have two options. You can either appoint or call a special election. It just, that, at that point, it's going to be if the city wants to spend the money to have the special election, right? And then you're out another six months on someone. So, I completely understand that. What I will say is, in most of our cities that have this place system, it's public information who is filed and run for each one. So, what most candidates will do is they'll show up to the city secretary and say, I'd like to file to run. Can you tell me who all has filed for each place? And typically, if there's a place that's empty, they'll just file for that one, so they can try to run unopposed.
Right, but in the past, that's not been the case. We ask, and we were told that they will get released whenever that closes. And that's, I don't like that either. To me, that's not transparent, and it's not, you have that situation. What if two seats don't get filled? Then you're left with the council that does get elected. They'll get to fill those positions with who they want. And again, there's not enough people running yet.
And if there are two seats, you have to call a special election.
Okay.
So, you can only appoint if there's one open seat.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
But if you appoint, you can only appoint to the next election. They don't get the whole...
Right, right.
If somebody quit the day after election, they don't get two years. They only get to the next election.
Right, to the next general election cycle.
Well, I'm saying if the incumbent doesn't rerun, if someone doesn't run for that spot, is what I'm saying. They do get the whole term. They'll get the two years that you...
No, appointment is only until the next election, which would only be a one-year term.
Okay.
It's not for the whole term.
But then that's going to throw that seat off again.
No, because by the law, that has to stay on that same cycle. That's where somewhere way in the past, Godly screwed up, somebody resigned, somebody got appointed during the election, and they did a full two-year instead of a one-year.
So, at that point, it would just be a special election for another one-year term instead of a general for a two-year term.
I see what you're saying.
Now, one other thing, I don't think our last election, as applications came in, they were posted to the web after Brittany verified.
I believe that's a requirement in the election code, yeah.
There was nothing held till five o'clock on the last day. That's when a lot of people chose to show up with their their ballot application. But for this last election, I can definitely say things were posted as soon as she verified they were qualified.
Yeah, I just, like I say, I just think we should go with the majority votes and fill all the seats, and we can make an agreement that whoever, if somebody chooses to get a one-year term, he gets it, or they get it. And if not, whoever gets the least votes, they get the one-year term. It's happened, and it's probably wrote someplace in our ordinance, just like this is wrote, that that's what we're going to do. And they got bypassed, and then four, five, six, ten years from now, they'll get bypassed again if we're not. Same thing will happen again, whether we got it on the books or not, because I'm sure it's on the book someplace now.
It's not. And I don't think that'll happen again with, we have decent legal, I'm sorry, if we have different legal representation, legal, a council that is, first of all, ethical, and also, if you guys just let something like that pass, then that's not, I mean, the Attorney General didn't like that, right? So, we're not flying under the radar anymore, you know, hopefully. So...
One of the other things that was explained to us that made me rethink my opinion was that all of our committees and, our committees and, I forgot the other term, our committees should be set up on places with terms also. And if we're going to set them up that way, we should be leading by example, as opposed to not. I'm still, I still see both sides. I'm glad we have five today. I don't have to vote.
So, in standard procedure for additional committees also, is that also after going home rule?
In my experience, it's a little bit of both. I think you just want to, you don't want to get into a scenario where someone is on a committee and they don't know how long they've been on it, and it it allows you to have some turnover, enough stability that you have continuity, but enough turnover that you're getting fresh people and fresh ideas in there, should council want to.
But you can still have terms without having place numbers for specific seats.
For boards and commissions, yes, because there aren't, you know, with P and Z and BOA, we don't, we don't have, yeah.
That's a very good argument. Okay.
The school board has, how many? Six? Six members?
Yeah.
Elected. And theirs is a place system, and they've never had any of the issues that have been brought up against this here as far as, oh, somebody, you know, you got a bunch of people going for this place and nobody for that place. That's never happened in there, and it's the same population as would be voting in this election, so.
No, it wasn't, because it's a city and that school district.
School district has a lot bigger population than a city.
Yeah, but it's still only eight hundred people. Rare, I mean, and that's a big, a big, that was big this year, right? It's true, it's true. There's less, there's more out there, but I don't know, I just don't, I can't get my mind around the argument, oh, we, you know, nobody's going to run for this place, because I can't, I can't understand why.
Well, my argument is that it's typical in standard procedure in majority cities to wait until your home rule, where you have that population to have the...
No, no, the counselor just said, she did, she said general laws had...
She said two or three.
Had had this idea. She's only, she doesn't do every city in Texas.
Well, no, I'm just saying the, but standard...
Do you see this kind of problem in in the cities that have places for general law?
Very rarely. I mean, I'll, I'll tell you, my my city that I'm thinking of is probably about half the size of Godly, and we we will almost always have one, at least one person run. In fact, the last several, of course, it ebbs and flows, right, if there are political issues or or things that are happening in the city, but almost always, they're contested. So, I've not personally observed it. I'm not saying it could never happen, because certainly somewhere out there, it has happened, but I've not, I've not seen that personally. Just because, you know, if if I'm running for an office, right, I'm going to say, well, what what place has nobody filed for? I'd like to do that. And then maybe I don't even have to run a campaign, right? But it it's certainly a possibility. It's not, it's, I I've never seen it, but that doesn't mean it doesn't happen.
All right, but if we decide against it, if the majority says no, we can still fix the problem.
Yes.
At the next election, right?
Yes. We'll just, we'll have to figure out what the best avenue is for having that person who's going to take the one-year term.
Okay.
Just to correct one thing you said about the the school, they just switched to places in the last election, so they've only done it once. It's not been a historical thing for them.
Oh, gotcha.
Could that person be notified that there would be a one-year term? Because they're going to fill out an application, run.
Right.
With their mindset of they're here two years.
Right, and that's my concern is...
And then when they're elected, and then you go, well, no, you're going to have to just be here one.
Yeah, so I I'll have to look into that. I think probably, just speaking off the top of my head, I think probably what the best choice would be is to when ballot order is polled, we just poll for for terms, if that's the way it goes. But if if we do the places, then we can just pick the place and say, hey, you know, you're you're running for place two or whatever. You know ahead of time that will be a one-year term. So, I think those are our two options there, depending on what council wants to do.
So, in the in the second option, where it's denied and we continue as we are, you foresee a potential issue?
Well, I just think we would have to find a way that is fair for everyone.
I think we had discussed drawing straws.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Some kind of drawing names or drawing straws, yeah. But I think it's best to do that bef, I think we'll want to do that before the election, so.
Yeah, we'll have to do it.
Well, the informed people, sure.
Because you have to...
We'll have to do it when she's putting the ballots in order.
What do you mean?
Whose name goes at the top, you draw for your places on where you're sitting on the ballot.
Oh, that's where you would do the drawing?
You'd have to.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I don't know how you do that, because, I mean, if you had four people running, well, somebody's going to know right then and there, but if you have six people running, how do you say you are, you four, you three are good, but you three are running for the one-year?
And that that's, that's the hard part, is I don't know if we want to say ahead of time, you know, since we have four vacancies, fourth, we're just going to designate fourth place as that one-year term. That seems like the easiest option off the top of my head, but I think as people are running, you you want to have some sort of expectation of what that one-year term will be, so we don't have an election and then decide. And someone could say, well, that's not fair. I was just singled out as the one-year-termer.
Yep.
So, we want to have that policy in place before the election, however we're going to do it.
And how do you know who the, that fourth place is?
Right, so you'll just have to designate it as, we'll have to designate it as something.
And what if you have an applicant or candidate that wants just a one-year term? Then that solves it?
It could, it could certainly, if they're fine with that.
And one of the other things, the CAD just wore their members in this week, last week, and they went by vote. So, the person with the most votes got to pick whether they got a two-year term or one-year term until all the seats were filled.
Yeah, that's certainly a solution.
That's the way to do it. Just make that note whenever somebody comes and gets an application.
Yeah, but if they pick that no, then what do you do? Just go down the line of who got the number of votes?
Right.
Say, I don't want the one-year term, I want the two-year term, then what?
Well, if the if the person with the most votes picks two...
So, you just go down the line?
And as you go down, that last person can just get stuck with...
Why not just get the one who had the least votes and say, okay, you're stuck? Anyway, whatever, something to think about, anything.
So, further discussion on on this?
I just see running everybody at one time as a positive, and somebody running against some, two people running against each other is negative to me. That's why I choose...
It's really no different.
That's right.
The majority, I'm still running against you.
No, but again, you're both running for seat four, and nobody, then it's me and you against seat four. And I'd rather just run for all, whichever seat, you know, I'd rather run for an open seat, period, not a seat. That way, I'm not running against anybody particularly. I'm just running for myself to be on the city council. That's my thought.
Well, you're running against somebody if you're coming up here to to run at all, whether or not it's some particular individual, and it will be a particular individual or individuals, because I can't see anyone saying, okay, you're doing a great job, now I want to beat you in an election, so. I'm going to make a motion to approve item C as written.
I'm going to second it.
I was worried here for a second. Have a motion by Councilmember Yarborough and a second by Councilmember Hodges to approve item C as written. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
No. Aye.
No.
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
I demand a recount.
One, two, three, one. Motion still passes three to two. Item five, items of community interest. Last day to submit an application to be on the ballot is February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. As you heard us discuss, please, if you pick up ballot applications, consider running for council. Is there any, any other items of community interest?
We will get ready to turn out the mass notification system. We were going to try to wait and put those together with the new website, but then we've, that's talking about it with Brian, Police Department, Danny. We've got severe weather that comes before our website will be ready to go live. So, in the springtime, we want to be prepared. And so, February first, we're going to roll that out, where people can sign up to be notified of, if they want to be notified of... if they want to be notified of, of just weather issues, they can just choose weather issues. But if they want to be notified of events and weather issues, they can mark that themselves, so. It's, uh, from what I understand, they go and gather all the landlines first and go ahead and put those on and those are on the weather alerts. If something happens and they don't want to be notified on the landline, then we just remove them. So if, if they happen to get pulled in, there's not that many landlines left. Uh, but if they happen to get, be pulled in and then they want off, we'll just remove those. But this is to be notified through email, cell phone and text message. So there is a way to contact people who still have a home phone like my mother on the wall. And uh, it calls and gives her an alert and so that'll be available come, uh, February first for all the public.
Did you say email, text and a landline?
Yes.
Okay.
And cell phone. It'll call you either one. On either landline or cell phone, but you'll receive text messages and email if you need. So if you set up that you want all of them, we, you'll get notified all those ways.
And that information's gonna be in the next water billing?
Yes, it'll be in the next newsletter that comes out. There's, we've already placed that in there for February. Um, and then I'll put that on the website and it'll be on the current website where they go there and they can sign up and then it'll just move over to our new website. But I just couldn't see us waiting when it's already ready to go. Because we've been working, um, our group, our team has been working, uh, to put together templates. Actually, I gave Chastity the ball and said run because she's been a part of it before, but um, she's gonna be working with the police, fire and public works for the different templates that we need, like if there's a water outage, if there's a main break, if there's a road closure. If Noah is part of the, the weather alert, so it is tied in with Noah, so that'll come from them. But if there's something really close to us and I get the information from Brian or someone gets the information from Brian and he can even send it out from his cell phone to take cover now. So you'll have your sirens and you'll have your cell phones. That'll be notified that way also. It's reverse nine-one-one.
And from here on out, the newsletter will also be posted on the, the website and Facebook so that all of us that don't get water bills will get that information.
So that'll roll out.
Because we get JSU waters. Let me rephrase that. That made it sound bad.
Do what?
I don't get a water bill from the city because I'm on JSU water, not that I just get a water bill.
And then if you'll save the date for April the twelfth, that's gonna bring the spring fest, Easter egg hunt. So we've got that on the books ready to go. And we've purchased two thousand eggs so far, so. We're looking forward to that. And I'm not gonna be these for money this year. I can't leave anything else. Oh, Brittany and I will be out tomorrow. We're leaving to go to Round Rock tomorrow and then we'll be in school Thursday and Friday for election law. She's starting, I'm at the end. I'm done. So this is my very last class and from there I retire out.
What do you mean, retire out as city secretary, as a city se- a city?
As a city secretary.
You're not gonna keep your certs up or anything?
Mm-mm.
Oh, really?
Not my city secretary. I'm gonna go ahead and retire it out after my five-year term. Because it's good for five. I'm good for five more. So. No more school for that.
Got some shoes to fill.
So on that note.
And I don't think there's anything else to give anything. Nope, nope, that's all I got.
The closed meeting of the city of Godly, Texas will now be held pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one point zero-seven-one, consultations with attorney, procedure for petitions for the release from the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. The regular session is now temporarily closed and city council is convening in the executive session at seven twelve PM on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. The Godly City Council adjourned its executive session at seven twenty-six PM and reconvened in the open session at seven twenty-seven PM. There is no actions from executive session. Is there any further business for tonight? No further business, meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-seven PM.